First of all, welcome, everybody. Calling me into order, please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Tonight, our invocation will be given by Robert King, who's the Chair of the Steward Board of the Douglas Chapel AMC Zion Church, the longest name of any church I've ever heard of. But welcome back. And the reason he's here, about two years ago, the invoker didn't show up. And I looked at him and I said, would you mind doing the invocation? And he did, and he did a great job. So you're back again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And it is actually A-M-E-Z.
A-M-D-C?
A-M-E-Z.
A-M-E. All right, I missed, sorry. I got it.
And it is quite long.
It is.
It is. That's why we abbreviate it instead of saying African Methodist Episcopal Zion Church.
That's a mouthful.
It is a mouthful.
But anyway, welcome.
Anyway, let us pray. Our Father and our God, truly we thank thee for the many blessings that we have received throughout our lifetime. We thank thee for our help and our strength as we go about serving you. Father, we ask that you continue to bless this town as it grows. Bless the town council, other officials, as well as the mayor of this great town. Bless the citizens, those who are young and those who are not so young. Father, we ask that you just remind us our reason for being here tonight and bless this meeting as the officers, again, the town council, conduct official business. Father, we ask that you teach us how to love one another, which is your greatest command. Father, again, we ask that you just be with us in all the things that we do, remind us of the things that we are not to do. This is my prayer, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Very well done. Item number four, adjustment approval to September 15, 2015, meeting agenda, Mayor Protem.
Motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
Second. Motion to be made, second in all favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number five, public comment period. No one signed up, so open and closed, public comment period. And zip right along to Agenda IM6A, request for communication, economic development report, and you don't look like Jenny. Irina Kristanovich, now, don't ask me to spell the name, right? Oh, I-R-E, well, I can do that part.
So, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, and how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
You're looking marvelous, as usual.
Thank you, Mayor. So, healthy communities have strong and healthy businesses. And on that note, I'm really glad to be here this evening and share a great news with you. About a year ago, Baxter Walker, he's right here in the audience, he's a real estate broker that we have a great working relationship with, visited our office and seeking a site for Robesys relocation, potential site for Robesys relocation from their leased space in the Bronx. And Baxter has a great knowledge of the inventory of sites in Holly Springs. And at that point, he and his team have already been identified, you know, some potential sites for this project, and some of these sites in the Moore's Glen period as well, in Holly Springs.
Has Baxter made a deuce on this thing? Hi, Baxter. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I really just want to show how your retention efforts can help your recruitment efforts as well. Because the fact that just several weeks before this project was presented to us, Jenny and I have formally visited Holly Springs Business Park. And we've learned during the visit that because of the changes that company was going through, the site adjacent to their facility has become available for sale. So, of course, at this point, we have presented the site for this project, and that is actually the site that Robesys has chosen for their future home in Holly Springs. So, I'm really glad that this evening, Mr. John Robertson, who is the founder, the owner of the CEO of Robesys, his busy schedule was able to join us, and I would like to invite him here to just to share a little bit about the company and hopefully talk about the site selection process that he's been through and also his future plans in Holly Springs. So, please welcome Mr. John Robertson.
Please speak into the microphone.
Oh, okay.
Zip. Okay.
Welcome. Okay, let's see if I get this right.
Looking good to me.
I feel short.
We don't use that term here.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Council, for seeing me. And thank you. I'll tell you a little bit about the company to begin with. Our headquarters are located in Aurora, Ohio, which is right outside of Cleveland. Company-wide, we have about 525 employees, and we have approximately probably between $100 million, $110 million of sales revenues per year, to that we bill our customers. We're a little bit of a unique company from the type of business that we perform. The business is automation, automation of medium and large process companies, industrial companies, people that are in the life sciences industry, power generation, alternative energy, chemicals, glass. We basically go in and analyze their needs and make their operations run in an effective and productive way, increasing their productivity, their product quality. And we work very hard on computer systems and systems engineering to accomplish all that. We presently have offices in four U.S. cities, Cleveland, Raleigh, which is our apex operation, Boston, and Houston. We have an office in Singapore, deal with Southeast Asia, and also a office in Luxembourg for our European efforts. I've been involved, I started the company 26 years ago, and we started with two people. Now, we're up to 525. And we've grown every year. Our average growth rate is somewhere between 5% and 15%. And we're, have been constantly hiring new people. And, I mean, every year, at least from our operation, this year in 2015, so far company-wide, we hired 56 new engineers into the operation. We, our operation is based out of Apex right now in a leased facility, and we have 115 employees in Apex. We came to Apex in 2005 with a handful of people, all displaced from Ohio, and we basically followed a customer down here to establish operations. And after being down here a while, we liked it and decided that it was a good place to, you know, establish a full-time office. And since then, we've been consistently growing, year over year, we've added engineers every year, 115 today. This year, we hired 18, most of them new engineers out of school. We deal reasonably effectively with North Carolina State University and their engineering program. And I think about 10 of our engineers came out of there this year. Other engineers are, you know, from other regional schools, some in North Carolina and not, and some not in North Carolina. So, given our consistent growth, I mean, we expect that our 115 employee base will probably increase, you know, a minimum of 10, maybe as much as 20 or 25 per year over the foreseeable future. And I guess we all don't know what the future holds, but the last 26 years at least have shown that we've been able to consistently grow. The individuals that we hire as an employee base are, 95% of the staff are degreed engineers. So, we have a very professional employee base. 70% of those engineers that we actually hire tend to be new graduates out of school. So, our workforce is somewhat homegrown, and we tend to, you know, have a pretty good retention rate for those employees, so they stick around and, you know, participate in the communities around us. The, if I had to guess, you know, the average age of our employees are probably in their early 30s. So, it tends to be a relatively young organization.
Right down my, whatever.
What's that?
Right down my alley, same age.
And to the credit of Holly Springs, I think we have a number of employees have called your city their home. And I believe we have probably around at least 15 or 20 that are in Holly Springs proper. And I would think that, you know, many more will decide that that might be a good place for them as time goes on. We work with a lot of companies in the area. Most of our clients are within a couple hundred miles of Raleigh. But we do worldwide operations out of here, too. We do a lot of sharing of resources between our various operations. We work with local companies like Pfizer and our new neighbor Novartis across the street from us down in Green Oaks. We also work with a number of power generation, chemical companies, particularly in this area, a lot of life science and biotech-type companies, involved in reasonably large projects with those operations as well. And as a result of, we're starting off, obviously, with 115 employee base, and we expect that, you know, with our plans with Phase Two, that we'll easily be able to get up to 200 to 150 employee within no commitment, but, you know, five to 10 years. And that's one of the reasons we selected the site, was because of its size and our ability to expand into the future and not be constrained by physical space. So, that's pretty much about the company. Any questions with regard to?
Like what we hear so far. Any questions for the board, or comments?
Just excited to have you.
Absolutely.
Actually, I have a comment. You know, when we work so hard to get Novartis here, one of the things that was talked about is that when you bring Novartis into town, there will be other businesses that will come in to help support or offer services to and from Novartis, and here's a perfect example.
Absolutely.
That's true. I mean, we, when Novartis originally started here, we were heavily involved in the automation of their facilities. And, you know, we continue to do ongoing support with them, which, you know, being across the street, we would hope that maybe that would further support their operations.
A small commute.
And that's probably another interesting aspect of our business, is that while we have 115 employees, we're very mobile. So, it's very important that we, you know, we move between offices, we move between our client sites. So, we could easily become larger from an employee base, given the size of our physical facilities, you know. So, our actual salary and physical presence may be bigger than our actual facility.
It's good to have you at that site. There is something that we marketed for quite a long time. We came close one time of doing something there, but it's great to have you here.
The site's very nice. I mean, I think your Green Oaks Parkway is very attractive, particularly for our type of business where we want to have a relative image for our clients and particularly our employees. It's very important that they feel good about where they work and the environment they work in.
And also, from a logistical perspective, as well, you said they have about a dozen or so employees that live right here. These are, and likely more, that are going to probably follow the company here as well. These are people that are going to be moving to town, who are just going to basically go and work across town. They're not going to be going to Rodley or Cary or RCT. So, that's exactly what this is all about.
And they're, and they're going to stay here. Our profile of employees, you know, there are a lot of employees that are entering their early phases of family life, you know, kids in their early ages and, you know, school systems. I think that's all important. And we're one of the best places to raise kids, so they're going to be perfect bats. They did a good job.
If it's good for the kids.
And we have a lot of kids, yeah.
Yes, we do.
But it's good to hear about the age groups that your employees are and the education levels that they have. It's exciting to have college graduates, engineers here. Is this going to be, and that you're getting a lot of them from NC State. I know they have a great engineering program.
They have a very good program. They're impressed with it. And, you know, we hire, we're very big into the co-op program, so at any given time, we have five to 10 engineering co-ops working for us down here as well. And we used to, you know, ultimately, hire them full-time in a group, you know, if you agree.
Is there any particular engineering specialty that you're?
We're actually electrical, computer, some mechanical, chemical, are typically our disciplines, software engineering, and that.
Purdue's a great resource for those people, but I'm not biased. Thank you, sir.
It's great to have you here.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. So, it is great to recruit such a great company to Holly Springs. And then the question is, you know, we are often asked, why is the retention and expansion program so important for the community? And the answer is simple. The research shows that up to 86% of new jobs in a community are actually created by existing companies in that, within that community. And also, with that program, we are able to assist our businesses to prevent them from relocating and to help them actually, you know, succeed and survive in difficult times. On the other side, the business community feels like they have a voice in some of the decisions we make, as well as they feel they have input in future changes in our town. And you all know that the Economic Development Department focuses on, and has always been focusing on, increasing the tax base and even more importantly, creating good quality jobs for our residents. So, we ask ourselves, are we doing a good job? You know, how are we doing in that? So, we have some numbers that I can share with you. For example, that in the last 12 months, Jenny and I have reached out to over 200, you know, businesses in Holly Springs. And when we say reached out, those are done mostly through business walks that we do together with Holly Springs Chamber of Commerce. We attend, you know, many networking events when we are able to talk to these businesses, and of course, some of the, you know, meetings that we organize, like roundtable meetings in the Holly Springs Business Park. I can also tell you that formally, Jenny and I have visited over 25 companies in the last 12 months in Holly Springs. And some of these companies are, of course, Novartis. And you know that Novartis operation has been integrated with Bio CSL. And starting next month, the new combined business will be called Securus, which is short for securing health for all of us. And Securus will be the second-largest influencer business in the world. Of course, other businesses that we have visited are OFM, Work Technologies, Core Gaddy Container, GMA Supply, and we have actually assisted the GMA Supply with their fourth expansion in Holly Springs. So, we are really excited about that. They started about, picture of their new facility in the Business Park. So, they started, just imagine, 15 years ago, they started it across the street in Village Office condos, and now, you know, look at this beautiful facility in the Business Park. So, we are really excited about stories like this, that they have chosen for the fourth time to stay in Holly Springs and grow with our community. So, that is really exciting. We visited Rendering House, met the new owner of the Rodney's Custom Sign. Joni, Jenny and I actually visited Carolina Brewing Company and took a cake for their 20th anniversary to celebrate that with them. And that's really just to name the few. And then the question still remains, so how are we doing on our mission? So, the fact that we are in Wake County, and that the Wake County is probably one of the strongest job markets in the nation at this point, is great. And according to the NC Commerce Department of Labor and Employment Statistics, in the last five years, so from the 2010 to 2015, the strongest employment, job growth, job growth of 26% has actually happened here in Holly Springs.
That was in Holly Springs?
In Holly Springs.
Really?
Within the Wake County, Holly Springs is leading the chart on the job growth and employment base. So, we are very proud of that. We are followed right by Wake Forest at 24, Apex 21, Cary 20%, Raleigh 15, and Garner 12%. So, we hope that these numbers show us that our community is definitely on the right track. So, thank you, and I'll turn to Jenny now.
Thank you, Irina.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I feel kind of bad now that Irina said she does 86% of the work with the retention and expansion, but we.
It's just jobs.
But obviously, you know, we both share a lot of job duties and do things together very well. Thank you, John, for your comments and for your decision to move to Holly Springs, and Baxter for facilitating that. We're really excited about that. And Bobbit Construction is here, Bobbit Design, and they're helping, they're doing the project. And Irina, thank you. That was a good report on retention and expansion. And I'm going to be talking about business recruitment, so that's another aspect of what we do. We continue to see really good project activity. I say continue, last few years weren't so good, but 2015 has been great. We have seen a lot of projects. And you know, most of those come, those large projects are generated from the state. And the entity that does that now is the Public Private Partnership Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, which I will call EDP NC for the rest of my remarks. Let me get rid of this. Excuse me. And those projects come from the state, and they're funneled down through the Wake County Economic Development Program. And Ashley Kegel is here tonight. She's a Holly Springs resident, and she's a program manager at Wake EDC. And we work with her closely on a lot of the projects. And then we also get some leads from brokers and site selectors directly, as in Baxter and other folks. And a lot of that's due to our networking activity. You don't want to rely on just one entity like the state and the region and the county to funnel your projects. You need to be proactive and get out there and meet some of the other players. And so, Irina and I have done, I think, a pretty good job getting out to meet site selection consultants and brokers. And earlier this summer, we received a call on a, it was Friday at 4:30 from this commercial real estate broker, and she was panicking because her client had decided just then they wanted to restart their site selection decision process, and they wanted information now on sites. She couldn't get a hold of her contact at the state. She called the region, they said, oh, call Holly Springs. So, we were both there, and within an hour, we had her concept plans and all the information she needed for her client to work on over the weekend. And luckily, that project's still active, so hopefully keep you posted on that one. Internally, we work closely with all the departments in Town Hall, especially engineering, planning, public utilities, and IT. Because when we get a request for information, an RFI from the state, and it's, you know, it can be two pages, it can be 20, they want to know about utilities and everything else, we have a great resource in Town Hall, folks that help us out of that. And when it comes to a site visit, I've got to give kudos to Luncie McNeil and his team, because I can call Luncie and say, you know, I need something mowed now, so we can, and he just gets on it. It's, so I know it sounds really cliche, but economic development really is a team effort, and all of us are involved. Externally, just want to talk about one of our partners that's very important, and that's O'Brien Atkins. You all have met them and heard from them. It's been almost 15 years we've been working with OBA. And what they do, they provide us with site design services to show how a building might fit onto a particular parcel, which is really, I mean, that's a nice visual representation to a client of whether or not the parcels that we're showing them are going to work, are going to fit. And also, O'Brien Atkins having, and other allies that we work with are an extension of our program, because they'll refer their clients to us, recommend that they at least can look at our sites. So, it's a really wide network that we work in. So, back to the tasks at hand. Upon receipt of the RFI for the first time, we have to determine whether we can meet the space requirement. Usually, the client's either looking for space or land, I mean, buildings or land. We don't really have the inventory of available buildings that fit. So, it's almost always that we're working on, you know, land submissions. Currently, we have four primary locations, which I want to talk about today and update you on some of them. You know this as the Holly Springs Business Park. Well, there we go. Here's Novartis, the Credit Union, 55 Bypass, Holly Springs Town Center, 12 Oaks is here, wastewater treatment plant. This is, a picture of the Friendship Site, just shows it out on US1, but I thought it'd be easier to show you one of the conceptual site plans that O'Brien Atkins did for us. So, a lot of times, this shows a 400,000-square-foot facility. If we have an RFI that's somewhere in that ballpark, we will submit this. I'm also going to talk about the Green Oaks Tech Center and the West Holly Springs Business Park. So, first, Holly Springs Business Park and the Green Oaks Tech Center. I mean, yes, I mean, Friendship. In order to market the properties, you've really got to know a lot about the land. You can't just say, here's 100 acres. I mean, you've got to, you have to go into really, have a good handle on the developability of the sites. So, we do this using a few different methods. And the Holly Springs Business Park and the Friendship Site were both approved through the, what was then the Department of Commerce Certified Site Program, back in 2002 and 2008. You may remember, we did that. And meeting the requirements of that program took about six to nine months, maybe even a little more, on each of these sites of Irina's time, staff time, as she managed consultant. She worked with internal departments, as I mentioned, and then she had to collect and organize all the data according to state guidelines. So, that was a lengthy process. And we, that's how we kind of got to learn a lot about the Business Park and Friendship. So, when we get those RFIs, we almost always have all the answers, which is really good pre-development work for us. This is what we're calling the Green Oaks Tech Center, thanks to Gina, I like that name there. It's 48 acres, four different, and here's Novartis here, just to get you oriented, Green Oaks Parkway, New Hill Place, New Hill Road. 48 acres, these four parcels. The owner here of this parcel is considering kind of opting in and helping us help them market this property. So, we've just started working with that broker on this assemblage and utilizing staff resources from the engineering department and some outside consultants, we've directed them to perform various studies, as we've mentioned, to discover important factors that must be considered, access, utilities, environmental features, and other site specifics that impact buildable acreage and site layout. So, we have submitted this Green Oaks Tech Center several times, but we're learning more about it every time. It just happened to be someone came in, needed 40 acres. We weren't going to wait and say, well, we don't know enough about it. It's like, here it is, you know, we want to make sure we get on the list, and now we're starting to do the studies. Fortunately for us, Wake County Economic Development has a program they've recently initiated called the Site Assessment Program. And what they're doing, it's really great, they've, they're pulling in their resources in the real estate community to each municipality to review, kind of do maybe a little more than a desktop review, but to review sites from multiple angles to highlight strengths and weaknesses of the sites and offer suggestions to remove the obstacles to development. In other words, they will provide us with advice on how that site has the best chance to stay on the shortlist for site selection consultants. You know, how can we stay in running for a project? So, we're going to be using that valuable service on this Green Oaks Tech Center, and that will be, that's actually in process now and should be wrapped up by the end of the year. But, so that's a real short window, where we're going to, we won't learn as much as a certified site, but we'll learn a lot. And then, the last site I'll describe is the West Holly Springs Business Park. All of these maps are a little different, but let me show you. Here we go. Okay, here's Novartis, Green Oaks Parkway, Green Oaks Tech Center. This is the Burt Track. And then this is about 140 acres here, that we have an agreement with the landowner to position this tract of land as a prime location for business recruitment. Right now, we're just calling it the West Holly Springs Business Park. That's not too exciting, but well, for now, that's how we're identifying it. And we've just received approval from the ED And we've just received approval from the EDP NC for our intent to certify this parcel. That's the first step. I guess what happened at the beginning of the certified site process, I mean, way back decade or two ago, the people would go, I mean, people would go all out and go and do all the work to certify a site before they submitted it to the state. And the state would say, whoa, you've got too many, you know, too many red flags. So now you have to submit to the state your intent to certify a parcel. And we just had this approved a few weeks ago, and that's our first necessary step towards site certification. So we will now proceed with the certified site process, doing an RFP for consulting services. We'll handle most of it in-house, but obviously, some of the technical things will be consulting services. And that will be a more lengthy and detailed process than the Wake ED Site Assessment Program, but we can get a lot of this done while we're waiting to do the RFP. So it doesn't hurt to do a little of both. In economic development, it's all about the product, you know, what you have and how desirable it is. Obviously, the more product that you have, the more chances that you have that your sites will meet the needs of a client. In a short span of time, we have increased our available land portfolio from smaller scattered sites in the business park, you know, thirteen here, five here, twenty here. We've increased that to a new potential two-hundred acre single site. So the sixty acres here and then the hundred and forty acres for the West Holly Springs Business Park. Could be for a single user site, some large, or it could be more of a campus, or it could get carved off into individuals, just depending, but at least we'll have it, we have the information. So we have, as I said, we have submitted all of these sites several times this year to potential clients, which is a whole lot more site activity than we've had in a long time. One project that was recently announced, you may have heard about the Novazymes project that was going to Clayton and Johnson County. It's a one-point-two-billion-dollar facility, six-hundred jobs. We did get as far as a site visit with that for the Friendship Site, and which means that we were shortlisted again. So you just got to keep getting, keep getting until you get the winner, but we did make the shortlist. In order to quickly and accurately respond to those inquiries, Edana and I continually updating our marketing collateral. Thanks to Wake County Economic Development, again, we were granted $2,000 for marketing material. And we asked for two fresh spec sheets on business partner Friendship, which you have in front of you. I don't think you've seen those. And we work with Joni and her staff on the business watch news letters, social media marketing, our website, and other collateral. And it's just, you've got to have that information fresh and accurate and on hand when somebody comes to you. It's a good partnership working on that. Talking a little more about smaller projects now, as you're aware from all the development petitions that you consider, general non-residential development activity is up. Our office sees it because we get lots of inquiries directly from people who want to open businesses. I did have a gentleman call me a couple of months ago, was interested in opening a laundromat. And I said, we have one in town. I didn't know, you know, how much market it was for additional laundromats. But we've moved from a laundromat to a gentleman with a manufacturing facility in New Jersey who's looking three years down the road to move because his talent, he doesn't, he can't get the talent he needs for manufacturing there. So it's suited us, but we're seeing a lot of increased activities there. We also, one of us always attends the concept and scoping meetings for non-residentials so we can get in, learn more about the project, find out who's doing it, get a relationship with the developer or the owner from the beginning. And then we also get shopping center developers, wanting information on demographics, which we work with the planning department on that, new on building permits, other activity. So I'll just give you a little snapshot of what's coming to town. That can also be found on the town's website. Residents keep saying, all of us want more restaurants, I think, although the ones we have are doing very well. I think Chili's and IHOP should be opening next month, from what I understand. And there are many other restaurants showing interest as well. It's interesting, a local businessman has finally convinced his relatives that own a restaurant downtown Raleigh, that they needed to come to Holly Springs to see the demand. Edana and I met with them a couple of weeks ago on a date with them. They couldn't believe it. He said, there are people here during the day going out to lunch. Yes, there are. There are, we can tell people, you know, say that as much as you want, but until people come down here and see it and experience it, it's hard to just send the information. So, and so we probably host, I don't know, I was guessing, maybe a hundred or more visits every year from retail developers and brokers representing interests. Other significant commercial development projects that we expect to come to fruition, we've had some preliminary meetings with some folks with some, I'd say, goods and services that our residents will be very happy to receive. Hopefully, we'll be, you know, announcing something in a month or so. A lot of things, a lot of those retailers that our folks are looking for. As you can see around town, our medical office buildings are under construction, several of those, and several are in planning stages. You know, we believe due to the expected 2018 open of the Rex, fifty got hospital. And as many of you have been on this journey with us, Carl Dean and I met with Ray Champ, Wake Forest CEO, on September twelfth, 2011, just fourteen years ago this week, to tell them, you know, to express to them that we needed more healthcare services in Holly Springs. Just fourteen years ago. We're doing great, I think, on medical office buildings. Office development, we haven't had a lot of office development. There's a really nice office building going up in the business park, here's my question. The home office building is really, it's a really unique property, very nice. We'll probably have some kind of an event out there, we've met with the developer and the broker. And then there's also, there's some other office buildings that are under construction. And downtown is receiving more attention. We think Mozzagahaw Lane should be under construction, we have it pretty soon. They're coming for additional plan review to, just to clean up a few comments. And then I just want to close with a brief update on our initiative to attract coworking space into our soon-to-be vacant police station. We, as you know, we developed an RFP for coworking operator, and we've publicized it everywhere we can think of, a lot of global coworking outlets. And we've got some response from a gentleman in Santa Cruz, California, and then some local folks. And we've had some good inquiries. The closing date on that is October 12th for our coworking operator. And we've assembled a committee that will work together to review the process in order to make recommendations to the council leader this year. So that's going pretty well. And we know that economic development is important for our community, but why is that? I've put down about five reasons, there's probably fifty. For one, non-residential uses are less taxing on a municipal service provider than a residential unit is. Such areas as parks and rec, there's a lot of demand for, you know, from a house, from a residence, on parks and rec, public works, public safety, and other departments. So in essence, the non-residential tax revenues can be leveraged further for needs in the community. Companies like RoboAssist and Novartis that have high employee count, with higher than average salaries, help to circulate money in our local economy. When you think of employees and where they spend their money for housing and food, daycare services, other day-to-day expenses, they usually spend it, you know, where they live or close to where they work. So, and also companies like Novartis and RoboAssist and others in our community, they spend money on catering contracts and office supplies and other vendors. So it's just an impact, fiscal impact that's very positive. When it comes to entrepreneurship and small businesses, they are a backbone of the community and in total, they make a huge impact. We've used this term a lot lightly, they're, these companies are sticky, meaning they like to tend to stay in the community where they start, so we would like to start businesses here and encourage them to keep, stay with our retention and expansion program. And certainly for our residents, too, it's beneficial to have more employment centers to reduce commute times. As I said, there's many other reasons, I'm sure you have some also, but anyway, but that is completion of our report, and we're, thank you for your support.
Any questions of Jenny?
It's just, it's amazing how much goes on behind the scenes, you know, it's behind that curtain there. And these opportunities just don't pop up, you know, out of the blue. There's a lot of work out there to get these sites located, get certified, a lot of work has gone in there. You're always working, and I really appreciate that from a board, my point of view.
And the landowners, it's been great, you know, we have good relationships with the landowners, too. When they can see it's a win-win.
I think it's important for people to understand that, you know, you don't just come here, take a look and say, all right, I'm moving here, there's so much more that goes into it. For instance, when you mentioned about the aesthetics of the business park, how nice it looks and how important that is, the business park sign that you chose, you know, that plays an important part. I think it's good for people to hear how much was, really goes into this type of thing.
Also, last week, I met somebody who's in the audience today, Ashley Kegel. Found out she was project manager for Wake County Economic Development. I've invited her to come to all of our meetings. She said she would. Thank you, Ashley. Anything else for Jenny?
You all do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Ten, I have seven eight, send agenda number ten.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Aye. With the mention of a matter.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Our big agenda here. I'm number eight, other business, I got to go first. Crosswalk safety is still going strong, and there's been some developments in crosswalk safety very recently, as far as getting across the street. Kendra told me about this today, and I want you to just mention what is transpiring up near Sun Park.
So up on Gravesby, if you haven't driven down Gravesby, at one of the mid-block crossings, there's advanced signage for the crosswalk. And then once you get up to the crosswalk, you can actually even push a button and it will, underneath the crosswalk sign, there's actually flashing LEDs that will alert the drivers to the crossing pedestrian. And the advanced ones that are, you know, a few hundred feet ahead of that, they'll also flash. So we're testing the site out for a mid-block crossing and this device, and we're happy and they work, we're going to be putting them in other places in town for next budget year. They are, you know, they are a little expensive, and so we will be looking for vendors pricing them out and then putting them for next budget request here.
That's exciting. Thank you for that. Could we use pow, bill money for that?
I think you probably could. I would have to check with what the regulations say for pow bill, but, and there also might be some like grants and different things.
You could pursue it, yeah. Also, the anti-bullying campaign is still going strong. We're adding, we just added forty more new members, so we're up to about two-hundred some now. It's a good thing. It's still a problem, always has been a problem, always will be a problem, but not maybe to the extent it is today. And the last thing is speeding. There is no answer to speeding except who's driving the car. We've tried everything that you've ever heard of, I've talked to every mayor, people outside the county. It's an attitude problem. And tonight, in front of Parish Teager on Sunset Lake Road, there was another accident. Somebody was coming down the hill, going towards Fuquay, and somebody tried to left turn out, and fortunately, my wife is one about two cars back, didn't get hit. But she saw the accident. Just please help people who speed, yell at them, scream at them. I've done that before. Does a lot of good, too. So that's my story, and I'm sticking with it. Who else has other business?
I just want to say, Councilman Hobbin, I met with the principals along with this parish, the principals of all the schools here in Holly Springs last week.
Yes.
Last week, about just some scheduling issues we have and how they relate to traffic. As we know, a few weeks ago, all the schools had an open house, all but one, I think, on the same night, creating a little bit of a gridlock. So it was really, really beneficial for these principals to take the time out, come out and talk to us, and...
Thanks, Jac.
They're very receptive to ideas and how we make sure this doesn't happen again. They communicate with each other now, but it was something that they need to do way in advance because their schedule is set months and months in advance. We also talked about some carpool issues that were going on, and just in general, safety issues. So I really appreciate principals of our schools coming out and meeting with us.
It was very informative, and, you know, the big thing is we begin dialogue and communication. So hopefully, going forward, we'll all have calendars going forward of the events that are scheduled, so we'll all know that those events are coming up and can get the information out to the citizens in terms of, this is going to happen, so plan accordingly.
That's going to be a big thing, the communication that they've offered to let our communications department know so when big things happen, so we can get that out.
On that same line, it was good to see tonight, they had open house at Holly Ridge, and it was very organized. People were parked away from the school, and there was no traffic there.
It seemed to work better.
But there were, there were other traffic.
Yeah. The accident.
Accident.
Yeah. All right, one last reminder, the DMV does everything except license, driving tests will be, somebody that will be helpful, too. Opens on October sixth unless something crazy happens. And we won't have to drive to care for part of the answer. I think that's one. Manager's report.
Yes, sir, we have Palmer Market again this weekend, May third, as well, third. And then we also have Dog Day at Sun Park, which is from ten until two.
Is it there, Ken?
By the picture.
This Saturday?
Yes. That's it.
That's it?
Very true.
Counselor.
Yes, sir, I do want to briefly update you on a litigation matter regarding the Main Street Extension and the litigation with Powell Property pursuant to Northern Carolina General Statute one thirty-three, out of eleven eighty-three.
It's an internal judge.
Welcome to go into closed session.
Aye.
Lieutenant, your favor.
Aye.
How's it going?
Good.